You stand and join us for a pledge.
Into the Republic or Christian Science, a foundation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, welcome. This is our Monday, October 23, 2023, regular Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bosso.
Right here.
It's Johnson.
Here.
It's Martindale. Mr. Shrinar.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here. Next, can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So move, Shrinar.
Mr. Shrinar, we have a second. Ms. Martindale, any additions or corrections to the agenda? Here none, roll call, please.
Mr. Shrinar.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. Next in your board packet are the meeting minutes from the October 9, 2023 board meeting. Do you have a motion to accept those minutes?
Still move.
Mr. Bosso, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Johnson, any additions or corrections to those minutes? Here none, roll call, please.
Bosso.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Martindale. Shrinar.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes. Now, the moment you've all been waiting for, so again, if you can hear that part, is the presentation of our AP Scholars, National Merit Scholars, by Dr. Eric Schultze.
President Caldwell, Vice President Shrinar, board members, Dr. Wise, Mr. Varsai, thank you for having me here to do this presentation. I believe this is my 13th year doing it. It did start out 13 years ago with AP Scholars, and it has since expanded. So we're not only going to celebrate AP Scholars, but also National Merit Semi-Finalists. We're also taking a look at students who have earned college credit plus associate's degrees. And then we have some new awards categories that we're excited, that started last year, to also present. So to begin, talk a little bit about the Advanced Placement Progress. And I always do this for three years, so we can see some trends and patterns of students taking AP courses, taking AP exams and how they score. So in 2021, you'll notice, if you look at the boards to your right and left, that we had 589 students took 813 tests. And about 41.6 of those exams, those students earned a three or higher. You know, if you earn a three or higher, typically colleges then accept those credits for college credit. So there's an earning and a savings involved for students to participate in our Advanced Placement Programs. So fast forward to last year, 548 students took 728 exams. 370 of their students scored a three or higher, that's 51% of those exams. So if you notice, we had 589, we took a dip in 2022, and then we started increasing those numbers again. A higher percentage of our students are scoring three or higher as well. So if you take a look and you do some simple math, and just say that an average of three college credit hours for each assessment would score three or higher, and assuming that the average college credit is about 500, and it's more than that typically at some of the four years at this point. I think I used 513 years ago when I started this, and I'm pretty sure inflation and college costs didn't get cheaper or stay static. But taking a look at this, if you do all the math, more than $555,000 in college credits savings were earned through Advanced Placement Opportunities last year. So these are the AP Scholars. And this is a, the AP program offers scholar awards to recognized high school students who have excelled in AP courses through their demonstration of scoring three or higher on exams. In addition to achieving a certificate tonight, colleges also get these scores so they can award those credits. This year, we have 65 AP students who earned an AP Scholar recognition. So I'm going to go ahead and read the names. Let me just read this. Okay, you see your name, your name will be posted up here. We will call your name. Here's the way this is going to work. I'm going to call your name. We're going to come up here. You're going to take the award. You're going to go here with the board members. You're going to take a picture. You're going to stand right there and wait for everybody in your category to get their awards, and then we're going to do a group picture. After the group picture, you sit back down, and we'll start with the next group. Okay? And every year, I preemptively apologize. I will inevitably butcher your name. Okay? So I'm going to apologize upfront. I would do my best. So our first recipient for AP Scholar is Savannah Brown. She's going to give her name, of course, where she's from.
Yep. And what college are you going to, and what career are you interested in?
Hi, my name is Savannah Brown. I graduated from Central Crossing High School, and I'm currently at Catholic University studying vocal performance with opera and musical theater emphasis, as well as creative writing.
Audrey Gaines.
My name is Audrey Gaines. I go to Central Crossing High School.
Jacqueline Rubilar Khedrana. Karate Eschbach.
I'm Jonathan Eschbach. I go to Grove City, and I'm going to graduate this year.
Okay, so the slides that are up currently right now, just in case your name is not called, can you just look up there? Is anybody on that list that is here that I did not call their name? What is your name? I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to hit that. All right, next slide. All right. Annika Harbin. Same. Annika Harbin?
My name is Annika Harbin, and I go to Grove City, and I will be graduating this year and transferring to Case Western, where I will major in neuroscience and minor in English.
Carol Loomis.
She's going into the parking lot now.
Hold on back, hold on. I'm not going to be there without being ready tonight. Kid, stay on the pin, let's go.
My name is Kinsel McInley. I go to Grove City High School, and I'll be graduating this year.
Giovanni Owen Acevedo.
Hello, my name is Giovanni Owen Acevedo. I graduated from Westland High School, and currently I'm attending the Ohio State University studying business and specializing in information systems.
Nicholas Science.
I'm Nicholas Science. I graduated from Westland High School last year, and I'm working on college.
I worked on college myself for many, many. Much of my parents should be. Okay, so I'm going to sit. Anybody that is in here who is up there that I might have missed for whatever reason, if you see your name, let me know. And we'll still come back. Okay? Now we have a group picture. You're welcome. Move if you want to. Yeah, if you want to stand up, you can move.
All right, everybody ready? One.
Congratulations. We are going to, before we move on to the AP Scholar with Honors, we are going to also recognize Carol Loomis, who successfully parked her car.
I'm Carol Loomis. I'm going to Grove City High School, and I'm looking at Cleveland State, Ohio State, and Ohio Wesleyan, and I'm thinking of double major in political science and history.
Congratulations. Now we're going to move to the Advanced Placement Scholars with Honor. These students have to score at least a 3.25 on all their exams, with a score three or higher on four or more of those. And this year, we are recognizing 23 AP Scholars with Honor District Y. And our first honoree is Abigail Prince. And again, just for anybody that might have walked in late, what we're going to do is I will call your name. You can come up here, make your name, your high school, what your future plans are. If you're going to go to a college, what college that might be in the major. You will get your certificate, take a picture with the board, and then stand there and wait for the group picture. Our next honoree is Catherine Northrup.
Hi, my name is Catherine Northrup, and I am a senior at Central, and I plan to graduate in science.
Evan Young.
Evan Young. I'm a senior at Grove City High School, and I'm majoring in biochemistry.
Evan, you should also think about minoring in voice. Andrew Ackerman.
Hello, my name is Andrew Ackerman. I graduated from Westland High School last year, and right now I'm currently majoring at the Ohio State University, or I'm majoring in biology at the Ohio State University.
Well, and I want to make sure, are there any AP Scholars with Honor that you might be up there that for whatever reason we could not call your name? Carolyn Malumba.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Malumba. I'm a senior at Central Crossing High School, and I plan on majoring in computer science.
Our next honorees are Advanced Placement Scholars with distinction. These students have earned an average score of at least 3.5 on all of their AP exams, hadn't scored a three or higher on five or more of those exams. And this year, we have 10 students that earned Scholars with Distinction. Our first honoree is Colin Crozier. I don't know if I got the name wrong, because I looked over and somebody tapped. That was close. Crozier? Crozier. Crozier? Crozier. Thank you, Mr. Crozier.
Colin Crozier, I graduated from Westland High School, currently attending the Ohio State University, and I'm studying.
Thomas M. Huff.
Thomas M. Huff. I graduated from Westland Lester, and I'm currently attending the Ohio State University studying biochemistry.
Okay, have we missed any AP Scholars with distinction? If your name is up there, we did not get you. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, group picture. Westland. Look here. I don't want to ruin the picture. So now we move on to the National Merit Commended Students and Semi-Finalists. This is an interesting one, because every year approximately 1.5 billion students take the qualifying test, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Of that 1.5 billion, 34,000 are recognized as commended students. Of that 34,000, 16,000 are selected as National Merit Semi-Finalists. Of that 16,000, about 8,000 are awarded a finalist position. Right now, we don't have any finalists, but we do have some commended students and some semi-finalists. So we are proud to recognize the following National Merit Commended Students. Carolyn Malumba. John Roth. Brett Wanger. Or we have two that are National Merit Semi-Finalists. One is with us this evening, Jonathan Eschbach. We're going to move to the new College Board Recognition Programs at this point. And there are four new programs. If you see over here, these four new programs are announced by the College Board last year. So this is the second year. They have to meet several criteria, some of which include having a 3.5 GPA. You've had to take the PSAT in your eighth or ninth grade year, or I'm sorry, at least two AP exams in your eighth or ninth grade year. And juniors must have taken the PSAT 10 in spring of 2021, or the PSAT in the fall of 2022. So of these, we have several students that have earned the National African-American Recognition Award, which we will now announce. Aiden Muslimel. And it's Carol. Jamo Aluabasayem. Carolyn Malumba. We are not done with the Malumbas. Joseph Malumbas.
Hello, I am Joseph Malumbas, and I am a junior at Central Crossing High School.
Dominique Fookins.
Hi, I'm Dominique Fookins, and I'm a senior at Central Crossing, and after I quit then to major in biology.
Is anybody on the list? Group picture. The next group have been awarded the National Hispanic Recognition Award, and our first recipient is Juan Valle Nieto.
Hello, my name is Juan Valle Nieto. I go to Weston High School. I'm a senior. I'm currently majoring in mechanical engineering.
Redular Madrazza.
I'm a baller, and I attend, currently attending the Southwestern Career Center for Engineering.
Thank you. Last but not least, we are going to recognize the students that have earned their associate's degree through our College Program. During the 2021-2022 school year, or actually, I'm sorry, the 2022-2023 school year, 850 students took 2,790 courses, earning $7,630 college credits. If you do the math, this is a savings to families in the community of about $3.8 million. And that does not include the probably $150,000, $100,000 in debt school costs. So every penny counts. And so we had 14 students that had earned associate's degree last year. We have two students here to accept some pause recognition. Skylar Cash. Albert DiNogo.
Hi, I'm Albert DiNogo. I graduated from the Southwestern Career Academy this past spring, and I'm currently attending the Ohio State University, majoring in public health and health.
For the presentation, if there's any students that have shown up that we did not recognize you, that shouldn't recognize. Okay, if you want to see pictures of tonight's event, you can find them on social media and on our website. So I just wanted to put that bug in. Congratulations to all the students. Congratulations to all the families. This is a wonderful event and some great kids tonight, so congratulations.
On behalf of the board, we thank all of you for coming out. This is one of our favorite nights of the year, where we get to recognize our scholars and the brightest stars in our history. So we appreciate it. And then I'll tell you the news you're probably waiting for, which is you don't stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to. You're welcome to leave now. If you want to stay and stick around about the business district, welcome to. So we'll pause for a minute, let folks leave who want to leave, and then we'll get started. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. For patients, next under items for action, we have facilities development.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the agenda like for items for action and physical development, we have two items. The first will be the resolution authorizing and approving a professional design service agreement for Architecture Incorporated for renovation to the district service center and also the transportation service center. Score Architecture Incorporated having previously submitted its professional qualifications to the district has provided a proposal for the design services required for the various scopes of work intended for this project. The district staff has reviewed the proposal and submitted by Score Architecture Incorporated, and now recommends that the board authorize and approve a professional design agreement with Score Architecture Incorporated for negotiating some of $255,000 for design bidding, construction administration stages, with an additional allocation for permitting and planning reproduction at a total cost for that of approximately $33,000. The renovations and repairs will consist of new windows and doors, HVAC reconfiguration, along with outside machinery work at our district office. And at the bus depot, renovation to the kitchen and bathroom area, reconfiguration of HVAC system, reconfiguration of cubicle, of new carpet, and also power washing and painting outside of that facility. That would be the first action. Second, goes right along with it, the advertise the bids for repairs and renovations to the DCS and transportation facility. This bid would go out in early November for the items mentioned before. After reviewing these items, Mr. President, I move them for passage.
Can I see your second, Shiner? Vice President Shiner, any discussion? The only thing I would say is that we're wanting to see some renovations on the bus garage building for a while. We want to be good neighbors to our new developments that are down there. I'm really excited to see what we're making headway on that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Shiner.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Smartdale. Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. Next, about items for action is student, schools, and community. Ms. Smartdale.
Thank you, President Caldwell. On the board agenda for this evening for students, my goodness, students, schools, and community. We have three items. The first is Central Crossing High School, NJ ROTC. I would like to attend campus in Brooklyn, Kentucky, that will be December 2nd. So here in just a few weeks, students will not miss any school. And Grove City High School show quires. I would like to travel to Ball State University in Hunsie, Indiana. The trip is planned for January of 2024. And just depending on the final schedule with that, students may miss zero or potentially half day. Then last, we have Grove City High School softball team to travel to Murrell Beach, South Carolina. And that trip would be planned during spring break holiday, so students would not miss any school. And having reviewed all these items, they look great to me, and I recommend their passage, and move to do so at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Smartdale. Wait a second. So moved. Any discussion? Here none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Smartdale. Ms. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Shiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes, and now, under items for action, we have our personnel board with Vice President Shiner.
Thank you, President Caldwell. On the board agenda this evening are seven personnel items involving 137 persons. This includes five certificated resignations, four certificated changes in employment, certified, excuse me, 89 certificated employments, two classified resignations, six classified changes in employment, 31 classified employments, and a message of condolences. Mr. James Lester served as a member of the Southwestern City School District Board of Education for 10 years, beginning in 1998. He was board president for three terms. Prior to his service as a board member, Mr. Lester was a science teacher at Grove City High School for 39 years, beginning September 2nd, 1958. In recognition of his service to our district as an educator and board member, a motion is in order by the Board of Education expressing sympathy to the family and friends of Mr. Lester, who passed away on October 21st, 2023. After reviewing these items for action, Mr. President, I move them now for passage.
Mr. Shiner, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson, roll call, please.
Mr. Shiner.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Smartdale. Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. Next on our agenda is items for action, board items. Any discussion there? It said one note, I just want to thank the district PTA for hosting their school information dinner and their PTA candidates forum. Our district PTA does an incredible job. We appreciate all the work they do every day to support our students and their families. Now, it is recommended that the Board of Education adjourn into executive session according to policy 0166 to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by law or regulations, state statutes, considered purchase of property or public purpose, and to consider the employment of a public employee. Can you get a motion? Ms. Smartdale, one second.
Second, then.
Thanks, sir. Roll call, please.
Ms. Smartdale. Ms. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Shiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. We don't anticipate any action coming out of executive session. If you want to stay until after we come back, you're welcome to. But we don't anticipate any votes after we come back. So it's up to you if you'd like to stay, but this time we'll be on the executive session. Thank you.